Creek Core District Seventy-Six Board of Education meeting is now called to order. Roll call, please. Giddens.
Here.
Cagle.
Here.
Catherine Reagan.
Here.
Val Reagan.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Greiner.
Here.
Bailey.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Reagan.
Creek Core School District's mission, it is the mission of Creek Core School District Seventy-Six in partnership with home and community for all students to obtain necessary knowledge, skills, and self-motivation to become lifelong learners, socially responsible citizens, and active participants in their ever-changing world. The vision, in keeping with the mission statement, Creek Core School District Seventy-Six will provide students with access to current curriculum and the tools necessary to enable them to become competent lifelong learners.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We are starting off with a budget hearing. So I would like to call the budget hearing to order. We need a motion, please.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Sixteen dash oh five, resolution to adopt budget for as a Board of Education, Creek Core School District Seventy-Six, County of Tazewell, State of Illinois, is caused to be prepared in a tentative form a budget, and the Secretary of this Board of Education has made the same conveniently available to public inspection for at least thirty days prior to final action thereon, and whereas a public hearing was held to such budget on the twenty-seventh day of September two thousand sixteen, notice of said hearing having been given at least thirty days prior thereto as the law requires, and all other legal documents have been complied with. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Creek Core School District Seventy-Six, County of Tazewell, and State of Illinois as follows, section one, that the fiscal year of this school district be and the same is hereby fixed to declare to commence on the first day of July two thousand sixteen, and to the end on the thirtieth day of June two thousand seventeen. The Board of Education held a public hearing regarding the adoption of its two thousand seventeen fiscal year annual budget at its regular meeting held September twenty-seventh two thousand sixteen, section three, that the following budget attached here to and made a part hereof containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately, and of expenditures from each fund be and the same is hereby adopted as the budget of this school district for said fiscal year approved this twenty-seventh day of September.
Second. Discussion among board members? Is there any questions? This has not changed from the tentative budget that we did approve. No changes have been made. And before your question comes up, Mr. Giddens.
I found the answer.
Did you?
Yeah. On summer school?
Summer school.
Yeah. I thought it above it. I thought it above it.
We will have to amend the budget for several other things.
Yes.
And so that will be coming, but this one is exactly what you saw as far as the tentative budget.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Are there any public comments regarding the two thousand fifteen budget? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Giddens.
Aye.
Cagle.
Aye.
Catherine Reagan.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Greiner.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye. Motion carried. Need a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and resume the regular board meeting at six oh four P M.
Second. Giddens.
Aye.
Cagle.
Aye.
Catherine Reagan.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Greiner.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye. Motion carried. Are there any comments from the audience regarding action items on the agenda? Hearing none, we will go on to action items. We need a motion regarding the minutes, please.
Make the motion regarding, sorry, motion to approve the meeting minutes for the regular meeting dated August third, two thousand sixteen, and September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, and a special meeting dated September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Giddens.
Aye.
Cagle.
Aye.
Catherine Reagan.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Greiner.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye. Motion carried. Need a motion regarding the payments list, please.
Make the motion to approve the payments list dated September twenty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Questions? Comments?
Oh, some money. There was, I should have emailed you, but I wanted to look at this until late. So you had money that LaSalle part of you, at like six and seven hundred dollars?
What's check number?
Okay, just a moment. I circled it. Um, here it is. It's check number eighteen fifty-five seventy-seven. I was just wondering what happened. Right here.
That's probably.
You can just look later. I was just wondering.
Was it post-school?
Yes, it was at post-school. You had Parkview money repairs and LaSalle money repairs.
Principals?
We had, if I could speak up for Parkview, I believe the repair was made in the kitchen. We had a leaking, uh, we had some leaks going on with one of the main seats.
I was just kind of wondering if it wasn't related to the outside drain we had put in of this.
I think at LaSalle.
I believe we also had a kitchen issue as well as a bathroom toilet issue.
I was just wondering if, well, was it because of the fire, you know, if they would go to insurance or not.
Any other questions? You will note that the E-rate was done, so that those bills went down. We aren't getting reimbursed the E-rate now. And this is the last Amazon, and if you've noticed the first, I am assured that is the last. Roll call, please.
Giddens.
Aye.
Cagle.
Aye.
Catherine Reagan.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Greiner.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye. Motion carried. Need a motion regarding the school activity fund reports.
I'll make the motion to approve the June, July, and August LaSalle school activity fund reports.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? Roll call.
Giddens.
Aye.
Cagle.
Aye.
Catherine Reagan.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Greiner.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye. Motion carried. Need a motion regarding the Parkview School Activity Fund Report.
I'll make the motion to approve for June, July, and August Parkview School Activity Fund Reports.
Second.
Any questions?
I do have a comment. The yearbook committee is now running in the red, so I hope that we will make some kind of an adjustment for this year.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Giddens.
Aye.
Cagle.
Aye.
Catherine Reagan.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Greiner.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye. Motion carried. Need a motion regarding the school calendar.
Make the motion to approve the revision of the two thousand seventeen public school calendar as presented.
Second.
Ms. Reagan. And you will note that the two SIP days, those have been changed like we talked about last month, and it has been adjusted to a hundred and eighty days instead of the hundred and eighty-one.
Okay, is that why that one day was just taken out? Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Giddens.
Aye.
Cagle.
Aye.
Catherine Reagan.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Greiner.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye. Motion carried. Need a motion regarding moving funds.
Make the motion to loan ten thousand dollars from the working cash fund. Is it loan or move? Because we're not loaning it.
We are loaning it.
Borrowing. Right, okay. Make the motion to loan ten thousand dollars from the working cash fund and deposit to the TORT fund retroactive from July thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Discussion.
So if we're logging it, do we pay it back then to the working cash fund?
We have to pay it back immediately, definitely. Years ago, we moved from the working cash into bus, I think, for transportation. That was a three-year loan, but because this is the TORT, we have to repay it immediately. Okay, am I correct?
Because it's coming from working cash.
Right.
Anything you borrow from working cash, you have to pay back immediately. So as soon as we get the check from the county, repay it back immediately.
And that's what it says, the money will be available, but I wasn't sure.
Payment's back there in November, is that right?
I think that's what it was. So, and this was upon the recommendation of the auditor, because we never want to go negative, right? It's just a cash flow problem.
Who are we going to pay?
Right.
There's money there.
Right, right.
Just because of state delay.
Right. County delay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Giddens.
Aye.
Cagle.
Aye.
Catherine Reagan.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Greiner.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye. Motion carried. Need a motion regarding the Parents Club, please.
Discussion first on this.
Sure. Want to table a motion again? To discuss it?
She wants to discuss it without a motion.
Discuss it without a motion first.
Is that okay with board?
Different.
All right, Mr. Giddens? Mr. Giddens? Since you placed this on the.
I did place this on the agenda. Um, as I think everybody knows, or almost everybody knows, that the Parents Club did apply for five oh one-three C status with the federal government, and that is still pending. Um, we just don't know how it's going to go, and that kind of puts their funds in confusion. You know, what can they do? How much they can spend, and how they handle all of that. Uh, there's some other stuff that's going on with the Parents Club, and, you know, included in this is our board policy for Parents and Boosters Club, and it goes through some of the items, um, and we haven't got any of this information. I'd like to see some of this information from the Parents Club and communicate with Parents Club on how everything's going to go while we're kind of, I'm asking to wait to recognize the Parents Club until they get everything straightened out, and they can report to the community, report to the board. This is our status now, right now. They're supposed to be telling everybody. If they ask for any donations or anything, they got to tell them their status is pending. Every person, you tell that. And, um, just stuff that is going on, and they have some problems, issues that they're supposed to be discussing, I believe, at their next meeting, or a meeting between now and their next meeting, and try to get those resolved. And I'd like to hear back from that before we, say, continue on fundraising.
I'd like to suggest we table that then, because it also includes the requirements of their bylaws, which they have not adopted yet, and I believe that's on the schedule for their next meeting.
I thought they were just amending their bylaws because they're required, they're already required.
They already have a bylaw.
She said they had bylaws, yes.
Okay.
But they just have given to us.
They have not adopted them again this year. I know it was on the last agenda, and they took no action. So let's. They already have bylaws in place, so what would they have to do? Just. We need to get a copy of those then, and they need to include everything that's in policy eight point nine zero as far as what the board requires. Do you agree with that, Mr. Giddens? Yeah. We should probably have them in place here, stuff that we have the, um, Mr. Alford should have already had a copy of those here.
It's only if they gave it to him.
At the office.
So you're asking to table this?
Let's give them a chance at their next meeting to meet these requirements and see how far they are on their five oh one-three C at that point.
So how that impacts them right now? If we don't recognize them, they're not.
I assume they are still under recognition from last year at this point.
Who recognized them last year?
It's not a thing we do on a year basis.
Maybe something we want to start. I mean, they got an event, they got an event coming up in two weeks, two and a half weeks. Nobody knows what it is. Nobody knows what they're going to do. They don't have volunteers yet. They didn't even discuss it, and they're going to meet again three days before the event, and I think that's some of their biggest problems is getting organized and having enough people and volunteers. I know some of the volunteers, they get called the night before or the morning up, so they're not giving them a heads up or anything like that, so.
Maybe we could have Mr. Wiston call the officers and tell them that the board is expecting this, everything that they need to comply with this policy.
Before they even start.
They do have a copy of that policy.
Yes, they do.
This policy has changed since, I mean, April's the first time all of this was added in there, so I mean.
Okay, so their current bylaws may not include all this now.
Right, yeah. I don't know if it's all changed since April. I think it's less approved then. This is the first, in April two thousand sixteen, that's the only time all of this was added.
Right.
This was recommended from press, so the previous policy didn't have all that in there. They might not have.
Okay, so their next meeting is October twelfth.
Yes.
What event do they have, the fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
Wow.
The Fall Fest in the trunk or tree.
See, I've attended the last two meetings, and I'm not.
And they give you references.
But they put it on the calendar, and they didn't, they're not planning this stuff, and that's part of their problems in keeping organized.
And we can make suggestions, but I'm not sure how much.
Let's have Mr. Wiston call and relay the information that they need to provide to the board so that they are recognized.
And that we follow policy that is established.
Mrs. Walton.
The event you're talking about on that Saturday, there's a calendar on your, I was not giving that trigger. I know they had planned it.
Did they cancel it?
But it was never actually officially scheduled.
Okay.
So I get a calendar of events that wasn't with calendar events, popcorn day, their meetings, so they may not be having that, but it was never put out to the, yeah, okay, it was.
So I think we need to give them an opportunity to meet the requirements that we're getting. They may not have a choice to do.
So the motion was made to table?
No motion. That's right.
No motion was made? It will take no action on G seven.
So a quick question, the fundraiser at LaSalle, where are they to deposit this money?
Where? That they just have?
Yes.
I don't know what they do.
They have bank accounts.
Okay.
Yeah, they're still their own organization. They're still their own organization.
No, we don't. I just know that may be a question, and if they're not recognized, just, I mean, is where. They are currently recognized. Okay. That's why we're. They are currently covered under our insurance. Because they are a recognized group under our insurance, because they raise funds for this school district. And until they become not recognized by the board, then they will no longer be insured under our insurance.
I was just checking.
That's what we're trying to.
A bunch of money shows up here, and we need to know what to do with it.
Exactly. Right now, nothing has changed. We are giving them indication that they need to get their stuff together to meet this policy.
I agree with Randy. He has some valid issues that need to be addressed.
And if that doesn't happen, then apparently they're either not going to be a club, or they might have to go out and get their own insurance.
Right.
I think is what we're trying to say.
And they won't go use our logo.
Exactly.
So, yeah.
All right. G seven, there's no action taken?
I think that's what we're trying to fill on.
That's it.
How long are we giving them? I think we should have deadlines.
When would you like to give them the deadline?
Well, I don't think it should be, they're not meeting until October twelfth, so I don't think it should, you know, the eighth would be, because it would be fair to them. So I think the last meeting, October, we should have a deadline.
Okay. All right, we will put that back on the agenda for the second meeting in October. Because we have stuff on that far away from send, and those are probably the strong bill, and that's probably the biggest mess.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Reagan.
Sorry.
Good idea. All right, moving on, we need a motion for removal.
Make the motion to approve Black Shore Snow and Ice Service Agreement for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year.
So good.
Any questions? Discussion?
Did we get other biz?
Yes, we had two people we contacted, and both people said they were not interested. They've done it in the past, and said no interest.
Did they do it last year, Black Shore?
Yes.
I thought they did.
And I think we were happy with my thoughts of the people. Everybody's happy with them, and the price is the same, so it's a good thing. Hopefully we won't have too much.
Roll call, please.
Giddens.
Aye.
Cagle.
Aye.
Catherine Reagan.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Greiner.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, we're going to have a short break here in our meeting. I'd like to welcome Mr. Polkington, please.
I thank the board for this opportunity to do this. Uh, this is our local Lions Club. We have a saying, our motto is "We Serve," and so, in a way, I would like to present this to Patty Smallberger. Come here. Come on. All right, everyone knows she serves in this community, and I'll tell you why, she does a lot of things behind the scene you never see. And so presented to Patricia Smallberger for your community service and fast action. We all are grateful, Creek Core Lions Club.
On behalf of the board, we'd like to give you this small token. You saved us.
Patty, also, the, those who are really for, you know, they said the same thing, that you're a hero, you're a hero to all of us, and we really appreciate what you did there.
Thanks.
Here we go.
Thank you for allowing us to do that tonight. You are all welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but if you don't want to be bored.
I'm not bored, I'm going to watch the show then.
Okay, written communication. Reminder of upcoming events. Next regular board meeting is October eleventh. There may have to be a special board meeting, we don't know yet. Chicago Conference is November eighteenth through the twentieth. I'm reminding you again, it's time to take out petitions and anyone in the audience, it's time to take out petitions to run for school board. There are four open positions. They have to be turned in December twelfth through the nineteenth, and the election is April fourth, two thousand seventeen. What, seven?
I know. In there.
All right, presentations and suggestions by board members. Anyone have anything? Mr. Giddens, you attended the I E S B dinner, would you like to give us a short, see you pass out information? Give us a short summary?
I did pass out information. I sat in on the portion where it was up with the FBI Communications Officer, Don Springfield. And I gave copies, what I had, to principals, the extra copy. It was a good presentation, and they do work with children's from kindergarten. They, you know, presented some of that. The biggest thing that grabbed my attention, that I don't have any information on, and Mr. Cagle had already left, it was involving the drug, getting information out about drugs and things like that. There's one drug out there, first-time user is addicted. First-time use is addicted. There's been a lot of O Ds across the country. They're trying to get the information out. They have a program going, and I don't know if anybody got a chance to listen to the recording that I'm reading or that, but they're willing to come to the community, the schools, anybody that will listen to them. They have a video, they're the version that they recommend for the high school students, and I can't remember if it was seventh and eighth, too. They use a strong language, I guess it is the people that are addicted, but they said in a, they've done a study, and he says that was the one that had the strongest impact with the kids. You know, everything else is kind of blown off. It is a serious issue, and I would like for the board to kind of listen to that recording and that, give it some thought, and perhaps consider, in our community, if we're going to show something like that, invite the parents, set up an E V, and with guidance from the FBI, ask them to be the presenter, and set up an urgent to watch the video, and he can talk to the community. The parents of the high school age and seventh and eighth graders probably point out, we don't want anybody younger than that, please, and have them put on a presentation, ask the village to attend if they can, ask the local law enforcement and fire volunteers, everybody, as it talks about this, you know. I don't, I haven't watched the video yet. They do have a one version online on YouTube, so, I'm sorry, it was Chasing the Dragon.
Chasing the Dragon.
Chasing the Dragon. But their version of it, they says, is they had more success with the one with the high school age kids, so I'd like for the board to think about it, consider inviting everybody in the community, and set an evening aside, and right here at our gym, invite them, and that way if that parent gets really uncomfortable, we're not going to get to see it until it's presented, that version. If they get real uncomfortable with it, then even with their child. I mean, we need to get the word out to the children, so.
Mr. Wiston?
The guy's name was Brad Ware. He's going to come here and talk to our teachers on November first in the morning, a very good speaker. I guess, he worked for the FBI, and he said worldwide, the FBI employs thirty-five thousand people, and he said, you know, there's an FBI person in each embassy throughout the world, he said, but it's really thirty-five thousand people work for the FBI in the world. And I thought, he said, now, to compare that to the police officers in New York City, someone someone guess how many police officers are in New York City? If you kind of looked around, 5,000, 10,000, whatever. There's 40,000 police officers in New York City. So, there's more police officers in New York than there are all FBI employees. And you think of FBI, you think of the people that investigate. They employ nurses, they employ CPAs. They're not just, you know, your undercover people that you think of. There's a lot of people they employ. Nothing like New York, more in New York City policemen, police officers. He'll be here November 1st. I did watch the movie today. If you want to go online, "Chasing the Dragon," it does talk about, there's really some bad drugs out there. And like Randy said, one time you take it, you cook. And heroin is really becoming an epidemic. Opium products they have. And it seems like they're getting worse. They're starting to make these even 20 times, 10 times as strong, and really tough on people. So, we're looking forward to have this guy come here. There's no charge. He really likes getting out. He's the PR person out of Springfield office. There's FBI headquarters in Chicago, there's some in St. Louis, some in Springfield, here in Illinois. So, very good topic. And he'll probably talk a little about the FBI and what they do. He'll go into, I think, our teachers at Parkview, I talked to a few teachers at Parkview, and they were really concerned that maybe, can we get our kids here on the 10th? The 10th is a day, there's no kids here. And the fact is, it'll be good for him to talk to our kids. You know, kids listen to us as teachers, as principals, as administrators. But I think the kids would really probably listen to someone like him, our junior high student. If we can get them here somehow on the 10th.
The 10th or the 1st?
The 10th or the 1st. Sorry, the 1st, November 1st, people, he'll be here. It's our institute day, we will have, he will be here in the morning. Hopefully, get some Parkview kids here. I think they could learn a lot from him. I think the kids need to be aware of what's out there. I think one of his big things, he wants to talk about is, you know, creditors of kids, people out there on the internet, you know. I think even our teachers at Parkview said, our kids give too much information out. They don't realize how, how the world has changed. So, enough on that. But Randy, I enjoyed it, it was really a good evening, great food, and we met a lot of people.
In your packet was a resolutions booklet. Do we want to choose a delegate to go with that in Chicago? Mrs. Reagan, you've done it before.
No, because last time no one had any, I saw he just didn't go. I went to the conferences and stuff. Because that's the bad part about it. It's the same time some of the conferences are, so you miss the meetings.
Does anybody want to volunteer?
I'll do it, because there's a couple resolutions I don't like.
Okay. All right, then I would suggest everyone go through their booklet. And on next month's agenda, please bring back your information to how you want Mrs. Reagan to vote. She can hold up her apple.
I'm voting no against them regardless.
That's good. All right. Mrs. Reagan is the volunteer. That's all. Oh. We've been talking the last couple of board meetings about the food, and how much food is being thrown away. So, I wondered if it's time that we do a survey again. We did one years ago, as you remember. Send it out to the kids, let's find out what they're wanting to eat. I keep hearing kids are going, I'm hungry, they're throwing away their food. Let's let them be the judge. And that's a good idea. Do you happen to still have your file?
I do, and that's why I was laughing. Broccoli is the most misspelled word in our school.
Sure.
It starts with a C. Yes, I would be more than happy to compile the results of a survey.
Okay, then we probably need to get the food service director and maybe tweak that survey. Did you have just, you have questions?
I have everything.
Okay. All right, is that okay with us, the board?
People ask the parents too, or just the kids? I mean, I can't remember.
I think it was just the kids.
Just, you know, what their favorite meal was and...
We've done several over the years. That's the one I remember is the kids.
I can relate, some kindergartners or first graders, we're planning to let out.
That's true. Okay. Get with the food service director and we'll see, get some input from her.
Had a good meal today, had chili.
Had chili?
Had chili.
Okay. I keep hearing about the country fried steak with no mashed potatoes and gravy. So, that's why. Okay. Reports from the administration. Mr. Wista, it's yours.
I want to steal Steve Thunder, but I want to thank him and Paul Nettles for taking the Warriorettes and the cheerleaders down to the East Peoria Homecoming Parade. I think the kids were excited about that. I know the basketball teams are doing well. Our 7th grade team has only lost one game. Doing well, very competitive. Had a guy come in from the United Way within the last 10 days. And he basically approached me in saying that, you know, the United Way has given our school quite a bit of money over the last four years. It's dropping some, but, you know, in 2013, the United Way gave us 43,000, almost 44,000. In 14, they gave us 39,000, 25,000, in 2015, and 16,000 last year. So, we've received, you know, well over $100,000 over the last four years from the United Way. With his, he gave me a handout and said he would like to have our teachers, just teachers, and probably other employees, see if they would make a donation to the United Way. I know there's a lot of our teachers that the United Way helps our kids, they help them in a lot of ways. So, I would be behind, I kind of wanted to just kind of ask the board what they thought. I don't like to ask anybody for money. But I think maybe, you know, we could just open it up to our staff. If we collect $200, we collect $200. Or if we, I think it'd be, if we don't do anything to the United Way, I think, they've done a lot for us. And they continue to be a lot for us. So, Ron Hale was his name, he came in and talked to me. I asked him, have we done this in the past? Have we asked teachers to do anything? He said that we have, it really hasn't been successful, or it hasn't really been followed through on very well.
Normally, they do that through a check withdrawal, is that what you're gonna?
He said they could do that, but he also said they could just donate, I mean, this brings money.
My concern with that is how hard it would be for Shelley to add to the payroll.
Oh, you mean monthly?
Right. So...
Think of Gene Day. Are we having Gene Day every Friday now?
Yeah, I thought that too sometimes. Yeah, that's why I got two. The Gene Day, I thought sometimes went to...
Do charity, right? It's do whatever they select.
Whatever they want you to do.
Right.
I thought it chose it.
And maybe that's a good thing, you could, the principals could talk more about what they use that money for.
I don't see any problem with putting it out there if they want to donate, fine. There's no pressure to donate.
Also, calendar, if you can read that over. Got Ron Hale on there, talk show, Homecoming, we have that. Steve, do you have your fanny made starting sales tomorrow?
Student council fundraiser kickoff is tomorrow, yes.
Parent-teacher conference, I have time there on Thursday, October 20th, it'll be from 2:00 to 8:00. And then we'll come back the next day and go from 8:00 to 1:00. The kids are not attending either one of those days, Thursday and Friday. Blue and white night, we've never had before, something we're gonna look at. The kids are out of school those two days, Thursday, Fridays, we want to have them come back on Friday night. We do have a Halloween dance scheduled for Parkview and a parade for LaSalle. The parade's gonna be at 1:30 to 2:30, somewhere in that timeframe. LaSalle School, Halloween dance, 6:00 to 8:00 on the Friday night, the 28th. Brad Ware, like I said, will be here on November 1st, he's in the FBI. If anybody has interest in what they would like to hear from him, if there's any questions. We've also been asked a lighting of the Christmas tree, I think it's the first time Creek Core's gonna do that this year. So, they're gonna get as many people involved. I think they're gonna ask some of our younger grades to sing. They're gonna have different contests, coloring contest, writing contest for different age students. So, I'm looking forward to that. And that's all I've got on my report.
Back to your calendar. I noticed it says Lions Club Hearing Vision at Parkview, so it says the Lions Club's here. What exactly do we do? Come in and...
Hearing fan?
I'm sure Bob.
Good.
Yeah, I'm Bob Henry from Creek Core Lions Club. Well, I was represented tonight. I'd like to make a short announcement. We, the Creek Core Lions, along with the Illinois Lions Foundation, with the help and cooperation of District 76, are sponsoring a hearing screening bus for the community, that's open for the community. The date of that bus being here will be October 6th. Will be at the Parkview School, the hours of 9:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m. Everyone here is invited to participate. Of course, we're concentrating on the students from that school because of their age and everything. But is it open to the public? Anyone 10 years or older? And is it free of charge? There's no charge to anybody? We're not selling anything? We're just providing a service. I think that's all. Did I leave anything out?
I think you did well, Bob.
How many years have you done this? Couple years now, or three, four years? How long have you been running at Parkview?
It's good. How long have...
How long have you been doing this? How many years?
We did it last year. Years before, have we done this?
This is our second year, Rod.
Yeah, this is our second year. And we're toying with the idea of how often. And since we are not equipped to test anybody under the age of 10, we're concentrating on Parkview. And of course, they have to have consent letters. And anyone that's from 10 to 17, either has to have a consent letter, or have an adult with them. Are there any other questions?
We appreciate you coming in and doing your...
Invite you all to come and participate. The more the merrier. We'd like to keep that technician busy.
I'll send my husband.
Thank you.
He always says, what?
Each principal, he's got a report, we love to hear.
I think Mick went first last time, so I drew the straw. Good evening, everybody. It's nice, it's cooled off a little bit. Just to reiterate from my administration report, thank you, Mr. Wiston's board, for allowing our career to go to the construction expo. There were some photos on the website. Students came back, had a great time, and learned about some of the construction trades. So, we certainly appreciate our students being afforded that opportunity. Fire alarm, want to talk about this briefly, and having had a chance to talk to Mr. Wiston. We thought, we had a report from Thompson's recently. They came in, repaired a part on a pole station. And lo and behold, yesterday, our system inadvertently went off again. And all the panels, the panels that we have inside the building, there are no error reports. There are no problem areas reported. So, long story short, it's something that we'll take a look at again with Thompson Electronics. So, it's gone off four times this year since midterm, since we started the school year. And that's not what we want. So, we're hoping we had it remedied, but it's unfortunately not remedied yet. So, Mr. Wiston went over quite a few dates, and I simply wanted to go to talk about our Veterans Day program. We are scheduling a Veterans Day program on Wednesday, November 9th. Mrs. Coquington and I were talking about our newsletter this morning at school. We'll be sending out some more information about our Veterans Day program with our newsletter, and we'll send some invitations out as well. We'd like to have as many veterans come in as possible on that day to recognize and celebrate their service. Are there any questions about the report that I sent out? I have a few brief considerations I'd like for the board to consider, Mr. Wiston and the board to consider tonight.
Not any more money, is it?
Not any more money. Not anymore than's been budgeted. So, no new monies, okay? So, okay. I talked a little bit, as I'm starting the school year, about having some incentives for behavior, and also for academics. And what I would like to propose is that, Mr. Wiston and the board, allow us to have a good behavior trip at the end of the year. And some criteria that we put together, we're looking at the criteria list. We're also considering including attendance, student attendance, along with the criteria. And we're fully aware and mindful that, in some instances of student attendance, there are some extenuating circumstances. So, we'll be, we're mindful of that area, and we will look at that on a case-by-case basis. But for our good behavior trip, we'd like to take our students to Peoria Chiefs baseball game at the end of the year. And that's the first proposal that we have tonight. And then, on the academic side, we'd like to propose a high honor trip. And the criteria that we're looking at is for students to be eligible. They would need to make the high honor roll either the first, the second, or the third nine weeks. And again, we're looking at including attendance as a criteria. So, those are the two incentive programs that we would like for the board to consider, to help go along with our P D I S program, as well as our Warrior Way program.
And what would we do for a student that makes first, second, and third? Anything yet?
First, second, and third? We could, I'm sure we could come up with something.
Or can we just have, like, high honors, and then the rest of them make honors? Because I just think that they, you would want, it's encourage to maintain them grades the whole year, not just for one nine weeks.
Yeah, no, we could come up with another program.
I'd rather be a little bit more strict instead of, we could have the program, the high honor trip. Just because you make honor roll for one nine weeks, should you be rewarded?
Mrs. Reagan's spending money now, isn't she? And that's okay.
You know, I'm just...
Winning.
It's academic.
Hold on. So, okay, so, just going to the movies, okay. I think that's fine, but if they make, if they make honor roll for all the whole year, I think they should have something definitely more than just...
Like maybe a St. Louis Cardinal ballgame or something.
Well, and that's not different sports, and that's another thing.
But they should go home to the Chicago Museum.
Thank you. And I think that's a good one, and maybe take out this one, and just do the trip like she said.
Maybe they should be going both. Maybe they should be going on the train.
You can work on that for us, Mr. Johnson.
Sure.
Okay? Because this board will be more than happy to help you, so you work on it.
I have two more things too. Sorry. It says excuse absence of 10 days, you don't get to go.
If you miss 10 or more days of school year.
And it's excused, I mean, when it's almost pneumonia.
That's why our policy...
Because it's excused or unexcused.
Right. Considering extenuating circumstances. That's what the policy is.
But no, I happen to agree with Mrs. Reagan, that if they make high honor roll for the whole entire year, okay, I'm thinking that that's really what we are wanting our kids to do, is strive for excellence. And I think that we should be thinking...
Out of the box.
Yeah. But I do agree with this one, because I think, I mean, getting high honors is like important no matter if he's at once or... So, if they do it once. If they're even at once, then not at all.
Some students may only be able to achieve once, but it's still a big...
Because that might be huge for somebody.
You've just opened up a book.
Well, would you like a third proposal? Would you like, while we've got in the...
I like this. But sort of one in there, what report they would...
Yeah, because a cheap honor game, that's fine. Not everybody likes paying that at all. Because if you're high on it, you can go to the baseball game.
But Mr. Johnson will come back with a second proposal next...
Absolutely. Hey, that's great.
Take something else too.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, that's cool. That's good.
One final area, a very, very brief. Talk to Mr. Wiston about the need that you have at our middle school. We have a need for a late-stay program. Okay. So, a late-stay program, I've talked with some of our staff, and what I've been told is we've had a tutoring program. A little Parkview, but what I've chatted and discussed with Mr. Wiston is, you know, with our eligibility's, we have students who are not eligible for both extracurricular and co-curriculars. And the proposal that I have for your consideration is to, for those students who are not eligible, for those students to actually attend an academic late-stay program. And the reason we've been thinking about this is, we've done eligibility for at least the past two weeks. And the thought that I have, and it's just an opinion that I have, but sure, we do a good job. We have accountability, we have high levels for students, we have policy. Students must have a C minus, that's great. So, what are we offering in addition to identifying the students who are not eligible? We're saying, you're not eligible, you can't compete in the next game, but what assistance are we actually offering? So, that's where, I think that's where, what I was talking with Mr. Wiston about was, if we had a late-stay program, those students who are not eligible, they stay in that program, and they receive some guidance and assistance with the ultimate goal of improving them to where our student achievement improves. So, that's where I'm coming from, and that's what I was asking the board to consider. With exactly what you're budgeting for.
But what kind of tutoring programs do we have now after school? In there two?
We don't have anything right now.
Not right now. Elementary hasn't started.
Okay, but I thought there was one from...
We lost it.
They quit, okay.
We lost that last year, and had to pay for it.
Right, I believe, I believe that we have had a tutoring program in the past. But I believe that for the most part, it was a voluntary program, I believe, in order for students to attend. But like I said, the difference here would be, for students who are not eligible, you know, it would not be a voluntary. It would be, it would be a mandatory step to where he or she attends until they get their grades up to at least the C minus again. So...
I think you're getting a bang for your buck there, because if you have a person that's watching them, and kids don't have to show up, two or three show up, that person can really affect the student retention. You have 17 students.
It's not that late either, it's only 1:00.
And it acts well. And make sure that it is open to other students, right?
Absolutely. It's not just the athletes.
Parent calls up, parent requests, teacher requests, and then eligibility.
C minus or higher.
So, we're gonna send something out so the parents know that this is available.
We'll send it out in Friday's newsletter.
Okay, great. I think last year, part of it was a complaint that students sign up... I think last year, a part of it was a complaint that students sign up for it and then they don't show up and we only have so many slots. So, are we going to do something like, okay, you get so many absences and then you just? For athletes anyway?
Right. She's reading the bottom.
Okay.
The absence.
Okay, so, for the other kids too, not just for athletes, we'll have the same attendance policy?
Well, you know, I haven't, I haven't really thought, I haven't, I haven't given thought to students who are not involved in co-curricular, extracurriculars and attendance. We can certainly look at that. But what, what we were simply looking at was, you know, right at this point, co-curricular, extracurricular students, if they skip purposely, then we would have, we have a little teeth in the policy here to where the student would not be able to participate in the next game that he or she was actually eligible for. So, but we can, we can certainly, we can look at attendance.
Right, I mean, I think it was a thing that people complained, we had 20 people and only 20 slots and then, and don't show up and these other kids want to get in and couldn't.
Right, right. And it's one of those things to where, quite honestly, we're not, we're, we're, look, we're piloting this with your approval tonight. We'll know more about this as the dust settles, as we actually begin the program.
I want to.
So.
And I think the money is there in the budget to have some, so I don't know if the board needs to approve it.
But it's good that the board knows.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That is a minor fee.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
That's it?
Thank you.
Don't need any desks or.
No, that's it.
Or.
Okay, thank you.
So, you're going to come up with something next time, sorry.
I know, we'll be a little listening.
Mr. McCormick, would you like to spend some money?
No more.
Okay.
You did. No, in fact, I'm excited to go second because if I go on first, everyone would have left during my speech instead of students. Just some items to report on this week. LaSalle received silver level status for PBIS recognition.
Very good.
And when you enter the front doors now, they no longer give us a nice sticker, they sent us an email with a certificate in it, so we laminated it and put it up there right below our silver sta, or below our previous bronze status. So, it just shows the progress we're making because at the end of the year, we fill out all sorts of things and say, what are we doing with this, what are we doing with this? And we've gotten to the point where now we are the next level up. You already spent some money because the bleachers got fixed. This morning. They're working, they're going in and out and I can report that the repairman said, these were probably the worst rollers they'd ever seen. He said, one looked like it literally just melted off of there. He said, it looked like a pile of roadkill laying there, these big rubber rollers. So, we definitely got our use out of them. He also, I mean, he showed me him at the end how they went in and out and everything and provided some thoughts and ideas as far as, he said, he didn't notice any other problems. He said, the bleachers weren't really good shape, but, and the wheels underneath there that they roll on are in good shape, but he said, he noticed some little small pebbles under there. He said, and if those get jammed under the wheels, he said, they're just going to scrape along the floor, causing more damage to the floor than anything else, but he said it will put some stress on the rollers. We get those pebbles because we go outside in the morning for recess, kids go back, pebbles fall under there. He said, you know, cleaning that out a few times a year instead of once or twice a year underneath there will go a long way towards helping keep things running smoothly.
And you'll see that that's taken care of.
Yeah. Got my A number one guy on it already.
Good.
Midterm reports went out last week for the first quarter. I had a conversation with Mrs. Reagan earlier this week actually and after going through about a month's worth of dates, no, that was fine, some of it was her schedule, so a lot of it was the school's schedule as far as what was going on. We do have a date for a whole school light, headlights check. It's not for another month, but we decided it probably wasn't a good thing to do during grandparents' week and it wasn't a good thing to do on Halloween and, you know.
Right.
One thing led to another, so we've got that scheduled for our building. Last week, residents from Morningside visited our third grade, started that last year. This year, I think it was only, wasn't it only two classes last year?
Two classes.
All, they're visiting all three of the third grade classes. We added, well, actually, the Morningside and Pekin had a few less residents coming and so Washington brought some, so we actually had two buses and about 15, there was about five per room.
Yeah, there were 15.
Fifteen of their residents came and I think really the first time's a lot of just getting acquainted because we had a lot of unfamiliar faces to me, so new residents coming to visit, just kind of learning the ropes, but the kids getting to know their adopted grandparents. And throughout the year, they do some activities with them, they read to them and I think the reading actually goes both ways, doesn't it? But also a little bit of just learning about, you know, a different culture, a different era that some of these older people grew up in, so it's neat. I like meeting them and helping them off the bus and whenever I'm there and just chatting with them on the way in the door.
They seem to enjoy it.
They do, they do. There was a little more apprehension this first time because a lot of them are new to it than when you saw them at the end of last year and they'd all been there half a dozen times. Oh, let's see, Cub Scouts were actually in our building yesterday. They came in first on Friday. One of the higher ups comes in during lunch and talks to the boys and just gives them a little introduction to what scouting is about. They used our building last night for their fall registration, so they just used the cafeteria. And the Boy Scouts generally ask to use our building about twice a year. I think in the spring then they asked to use the gym for their pine wood derby. So, they're in a couple of times a year and that's all they ever asked for. Next week starts grandparents' week, so we've got our book fair going on as well. This year, it's actually a little extended out, we, I always thought it was a good idea to just get it done in one week and be done with it. Because next Friday, we've got a half day and the following Monday is Columbus Day. You know, we were, it's always right, beginning October here, so Monday will be kindergarten, Tuesday's first grade, Wednesday's second grade, Thursday's third grade, and then we jump all the way till the following Tuesday before we get to fourth grade. But the kitchen staff is always very helpful in making that work. Ms. Davis does a nice job of putting out the invitations and taking care of that end of things. And in general, it's, it's a, it's a neat experience to see the grandparents come in and every once in a while, I meet somebody who knew my dad or something along those lines and it's not just grandparents. Sometimes we get some aunts, some uncles who fill in, sometimes we get great grandparents and I believe we had a great, great grandparent who's been there at least once. Just what you need another excuse to come eat lunch, huh? Third and I've actually talked with both third and fourth grade that they meet collectively as a team every week and I've talked with both groups about attending some of those meetings so that we can talk about some plans for, and get some things rolling as far as how can we improve our park scores. Okay, so we'll be doing that kind of in, in smaller group sessions since in my building, it does not apply to every grade. I can report that I did speak with Mrs. Bell concerning the Christmas tree lighting and she was going to start working on some Christmas songs early. The Christmas tree lighting is in, I believe, on a Friday evening and obviously we can't make the students go, but she wants to try and get them at least familiar with just the basic Christmas songs so, and hopefully encourage a lot of them to come up there and sing along with us. So, we're doing our part to get as many of our kids there as possible. They can be a neat event. And then last thing, I just want to kind of piggyback on Mr. Johnson. We're setting our tutoring up like we had it last year, it's, it's twice a week and it'll begin in, in October. We're just working on getting the tutors set up right now and then identifying the students most in need of that tutoring and going from there.
Twice a week before school or after school?
After school.
Okay. Any questions?
I'd like to add on his school. We took the third graders, we got a call from the LaSalle museum out at the Creve Court Park and they said, you know, we've got these, I don't know what Saturday and Sunday was, but it was a big day at the.
Rodents.
Rodents. And they were all excited, they said, no kids are planning on coming. I said, and they remembered me stopping in there about a week after I got the job and they said, we're going to bring kids out. And they said, you said you'd bring kids. I said, okay, we'll have a class. So, we got third grade, I don't know if the teachers were that excited, I told them we're going down, we're going to go to the monument, go down the hill, up the hill and that's going to be a little exercise and then we're going to have a half hour in the museum, a half hour with ice cream. Matter of fact, George, Phil content, our bus driver, paid for Swan's truck to come there, I paid for the water, kids had water and ice cream, they were happy with that. They actually got to go to the fort and see things. It's amazing what you see out there, I mean, I was amazed, I'm sitting there thinking there's a guy who carves arrowheads, I'm thinking, who carves arrowheads? I know people look for arrowheads, but do people actually carve them? And he had the most beautiful arrowheads and he, and I said, those things look sharp. And the other guy said, sharp as a razor, yeah, he'll catch it, don't, don't watch what you do there. But go back to the, we started at the museum, at the museum, the monument, went down the steps, I called them the only concrete steps going down.
How many steps, Mrs. Radovich?
Two hundred and one.
I watch that.
Mrs. Radovich was one of the third grade teachers that did go down. The funny part was, we were going and the mosquitoes are really bad, so I had brought some off and sprayed all the kids, the teachers, a couple of teachers, that we're getting bit up. I said, I'm a tough old guy, they don't bite me, but I'm taking them up this trail, we go down, we start to go up the hill and I go, oh my gosh, we've got a big tree that's right hanging, it's halfway leaning, just off the ground and I'm thinking, do we go around it, if we go under, some kids will get smashed and they'll fall. So, I get up there, I think I kind of lose my mind for a second because I'm like, okay, kids, don't worry, we're just going to go around it. And we go around it and I notice I'm walking in green, you know, whether, what kind of weeds they are, I'm not sure, I'm like, this isn't good. And one kid said, Mr. Winston, I think the trail goes this way. And I said, oh, right, I was going around this thing, I was totally going off the trail. So, if the kid went to Spookum, it might have been a long walk up that hill, but we got there. Kids liked it, came back, but George was really good, Jordan and I, George was so excited the morning of, he said, he was here an hour early, just ready to go. I said, George, it's not a big deal, we leave at 12 o'clock. People liked it, kids liked it, teachers liked it. The mosquitoes are bad, they tell us.
Mosquitoes liked it too.
We did it all, we sprayed off and it was a good time. But Mick, thanks for letting me go. Mickey, he says, do you want me to come along? I said, I think we've got it, we've got it covered. Third graders, the museum, I think I listed up very, there's a, probably what caught my attention, there's a baby deer that's in a, in a, it's got a glass cover on it and I'm like, God, it's the youngest looking deer, you know, how old is that deer? They said, well, it actually was, the mom was hit, they pulled this deer out of the stomach of the mom and, you know, actually that's how small of a deer, it's just really tiny, 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 but very interesting. Learned about the fort, no one knows where the fort was built, they've got it up on the hill now, they really think it was maybe down by the river, but they say there is no proof where that, that museum, the fort was, so maybe someday they'll find out. As of now, there's no, no where the fort is. Mrs. Radovich, thanks for going, I know you did great.
It's not her first time either.
Not thousand steps though.
But we're not going to do those steps again.
I think the students loved it.
Oh, they liked it because it's just a little, and I think a couple of the kids, a couple of kids, I watched them pretty close, I noticed when their faces were getting red and they were starting to breathe pretty heavy, we stopped and I said, guys, it's, it's really the shade, thank goodness for the shade, it was beautiful underneath that shaded area. But the kids, I watched them pretty close, we were the leaders, we did have a few kids strangle back, we actually got through, through the woods and they said, there's still a couple of kids out there and a couple of teachers out there, so I started walking back, I said, I will find them, I will find them, so I started walking back and they were coming, they were just coming up the hill.
Well, hopefully they had now.
All right. Committee reports, do we have anything on building and grounds?
No.
All right. Policy, Mr. Giddens, you met last night?
We did meet last night, we went through two press packets and we turn them over to secretary and hopefully, next meeting.
I would say probably the end of the month.
Oh, no, I almost got them done.
Oh, okay, next month, or okay, next meeting. All right, thank you.
Randy and I went to the meeting and one of the guys from the state said, one thing that has burdened superintendents and principals now is the number of policies, there's like three to four hundred pages of policy that people are supposed to adopt and he said, there's just a lot this year on policy, there's lots of policies and they change them, they change a policy and two months later, we'll change that same policy. So, there's lots of changes.
But we should be caught up.
He said he was on page 370 out of 407.
Are we almost caught up?
We are, almost caught up. We got.
Okay.
Very good. You did October of 2015.
February 16.
16.
Okay.
Now, he says July 16.
July, okay. All right.
Savannah does a great job with notes.
Yes, she does.
Very good job. Very, well, I think.
Technology.
Nothing at this time.
Aaron advisor.
Where are we at on the fobs? I know the guy was here today and asked questions.
We just paid the bill.
Fobs. No, they have not. And I tried to issue a fob today, it's not the actual, I could issue a fob, I don't think it's the doors, I think it's the way the system is set up. So, when they go over and try to fob in, the light lights up, but it won't let them in, so it's not reading the fob, it's, it's something that the company is going to have to come and.
Reprogram. It's not a J. Not a J thing?
I don't know, I, I put a tech ticket in and I said, I can set them up, I know how to set up a fob and issue it to an employee, but I have no idea how the software actually hooks to the doors and now I think there is one door, your front door, that it's actually the door itself that needs to be.
Okay, then we probably need to get the company out here. J doesn't answer.
It's a little worse in the back.
Right.
He's not asking for money, he said.
All right.
But if he's not here and I have to fix it at the same time.
No, that's two different people. Johnson's email did say that all the crows are in and being used, so.
Are there any visitors wishing to address the board?
Hi, Wade. I'm Don Bachler. I want to congratulate the board on those cameras they put in over the park, you know, I've talked to Mr. Johnson, I've talked to Mr. Winston. Fantastic, wish they had those 25 years ago. You know, I mean, I'm sitting there, you know, the kids come in, what's wrong, things like that, they tell you all kinds of stories, sit down or write it up and let me read it and I can compare it. We had an incident when Mr. Johnson was gone, I had kids write it up and I thought, what am I doing this? Amber brought me in, showed me the cameras, I mean, it showed where the, the one kid really aggravated the other kid, yes, he did something wrong, but they had the boys initiated it and that didn't kind of come out, you know, doesn't quite come out until you actually see it on camera. So, I know you spent a lot of money on it, but they're worth every penny, they're saving, saving time and effort and investigation, whatever it may be. And who's doing what, when, you pull up the, you can pull up the cameras, I mean, how many, you got 16 of them?
Yes.
I think so.
You know, even outside, she Amber pulled up when they're outside, people going up to the doors, whatever, she showed me a video that, one night, somebody was trying to get in, everything like that, so it's got good resolution, so I think that would be to your advantage, so just want to compliment you on, and I know you talk about spending money, things like that, but that's money well spent, at least their time and effort, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I wanted, I had another issue I was going to talk to you about, I wasn't going to talk about, but you brought it up.
You don't want to spend money, do you?
No, but you know, you need to get something under control, I'm going to tell you that right now. I've been here for many years, it's not the first time, but you need to get your parents' club under control. I told the superintendent a couple of years ago, it's not going to work, poor way to go, you know, you've got two building principals here, they're in charge of your parents' club. They're in charge of it, they can go there, yes. I can still remember superintendent years ago had to sit down at the parents' clubs and we had a meeting at nighttime to make sure they're going through the right direction. And I mean, he had to lay the, actually, the superintendent had to lay the ground rules[1788.02] And I mean, he had to lay the, actually, the superintendent had to lay the ground rules for these parents' clubs. And, and the role that they play, the role they play, there's two different, both schools should have parents' club, don't get me wrong, okay? But they're different things, you've got a student council that does a lot of their things, okay? It should do, and it should be working together, you know, Mick's got his parents' club, they got a whole different role, whether it be like the popcorn, whatever it may, whatever means it is. And the two principals need to get together to make sure their parents' clubs are working together. You've got something going on, I found out just today, like, something over there, thanks, you know? You've got, you've got two, you've got two things going on, this community is taking money out of this community. And I can still remember sitting here at the board meetings and stuff like that, where you get fundraisers going almost the same time, and the rotation. I can remember speaking to Mr. Bradshaw, myself, Mr. Garvin about, okay, who goes first this year, who goes second, who goes third, and then you have a rotation. I have a superintendent that used to say, you know, there's only so much money here in the community. You know, and you've got two fundraisers going on at the same time, back to back almost, it's not good. But Randy, you're right, you need to get the parents' club under control, they should be under the control of the school district, not a separate entity on their own. And the building principals, I'll say for that, they should be in charge of what's going on, and it works through the building principals. Not going on, whether it be going out to Pizza Hut, whatever it may be, these guys, you know, you're going, you're under La Salle parent club, guess who's the principal of La Salle, Mick, who's the principal of Parkview School, he is. You know, they wanna have, help out the student council, and they should be able to help out, whether it be, you know, we talked about dances and things like that, sharing money, and everything like that, but you know, there's different roles for different parents' club, and please get it under control, because I've seen parents' clubs previously here, and sitting there with the superintendent, Mr. Weston, he brought them all in and said, this is the way it's gonna be if you're gonna be representative of Creve Court Schools, and that's what they are, they're using a name. And I think you, you just guys got done saying that, you know, their logo, whatever it may be. And there's lots of things parents' clubs can do, you know? I wouldn't talk about that.
Thanks for coming back, we appreciate that.
No, no, we don't need that either, you know?
Okay, I forgot one thing, and since Mr. Gary wasn't here tonight, that's why I forgot. But we also have a small token for his participation in the incident, and we wanna thank him for that, and.
I was tickled to see him, um, Kelly, I was tickled to see him.
You were, so, Mrs. Walton, will you take care of that for me? All right, we need a motion for executive session, please.
Make a motion to enter an executive session for student matters, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, collective bargaining matters between the public body and the exclusive representation of its employees, and review of the executive session minutes from the regular meeting held July twenty-sixth, August ninth, August twenty-third, and September thirteen of two thousand and sixteen, at seven fourteen.
Saika.
Giddens.
Hi.
Kegel.
Hi.
Captain Reagan.
Hi.
Val Reagan.
Tyler.
I'm Griner.
Hi.
Bailey.
All right, motion carried, ten minute period.